Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us for our January 17th work session. Up first today, we have lobbyist service for Maryland Municipal Electric Companies. With us, Nathan and Nancy, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. You may recall, two years ago, we partnered with the other Maryland Municipal Electric Companies and lobbied for and achieved their goal in providing capital on our solar renewable energy credit. Easton is continuing that lobbyist practice more in a maintenance capacity and have asked, well, they're not asking, they've stated that they'll accept, they'll bear all costs for lobbyist service. But however, you know, they are acting on our behalf for all municipal electric companies in the state to keep our awareness out there. You know, there's only five municipalities in four different counties in the state. And a lot of senators and House representatives tend to overlook us or not even are aware that we're out there. So to keep our eye on any bills and to act on our behalf, staff suggests a $10,000 contribution to their $60,000 efforts. So if there's any questions or additional comments.
I think it's much needed. You guys good?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, update on land acquisition for Wakefield Road. Chief Lauren Rodney.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. This is a request for final approval to move forward with the purchase of the properties on Wakefield Road for the future sighting of a fire station. We have an ordinance in front of you to be introduced this January 31st, two weeks from tonight, with anticipated passage 28th of February and an expected effective date of March 31st. If you look at the final sales agreement, it calls for settlement on or before September 30th. This property is moving faster than the South Tomic Street property for a variety of reasons. But nonetheless, it is budgeted in a CFP project for the land acquisition piece only, and we recommend your approval.
I do anything?
Thank you. All right, approval to submit applications for Senator George Edward Fund.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
I am here for seeking approval from Mayor and Council to go ahead and receive approval for staff to both submit and receive funds for the Senator George C. Edwards Fund. The city staff are looking at submitting three applications for consideration. The first project that we are looking at considering is for the Heggestown Fieldhouse for a request of $4 million. Heggestown Revolving Loan Fund top off for a request of $250,000. And the Invest Heggestown Program for a request of $750,000. We have attached letters of intent for each of the three projects with the overall request itself. The fund is, the fund was recently accepted during the 2022 legislative session. It's looking at submitting $20 million for Western Maryland for the first year and then $10 million for the next three years after that. For a total of $50 million for the Western Maryland Economic Redevelopments in general. At this time, we'd like to go ahead and move forward as the Mayor Council would agree.
Yep.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Heart of Art Grant Program, ARPA funding. Hi, Brittany.
Good afternoon. So this is using ARPA funds that were set aside to provide incentives and support to local artists. So this grant is for $12,000. The general concept is, if you flip over, you'll see grant recipients will receive $100 for each event attended for a maximum of up to 10 events totaling $1,000. And all vendor fees will be waived for these grant recipients. So if we have 12 grant recipients that will receive up to $1,000, or we'll just see what type of applications come in. If you just want to quickly take a look at the application process and requirements, we tried to keep it easy. The goal of this grant is to bridge the gap of connecting artists with their customers, to lift the burden of paying a vendor fee to attend an event, and to ensure that artists will receive a payment after each market. Because artists can attend events but may not sell anything. So this ensures that they'll at least receive a minimum of $100. And they'll receive that check in the mail after they attend that event. And on the next page, you'll see we have 10 or 11 events listed here. So they just have to choose, they can choose up to 10 events that they plan to attend in 2023. So just seeking approval that we can go ahead and release this. And if you see anything that you feel we may need to add or change to process and requirements.
I think this is awesome. Yeah.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'll put you on the spot. Do you want to just talk just real briefly about the calendar of events? Going, starting in, what, March or April?
April, we have our first event called Handmade Heggestown. It's going to be a spring market in University Plaza. We're going to do a few cleanup event, community cleanup events. I know the mayor started that, so we're going to pick up where that's left off and hopefully have at least one a quarter and engage some different community groups and organizations. And then from there, we have our two Imagine Heggestown, one in May and one in June. And then from there, we're actually going to shift a little bit from that, keeping the same concept but moving those to Wednesday evenings. So in July and August, every Wednesday, there will be entertainment and a market. It's going to be called Midweek Music and Market. We found that Friday evenings didn't get a ton of attendance. We feel because a lot of people are going on summer vacation or they may have other things to do. So hopefully, offering a midweek option, we may attract more families and different people downtown during the middle of the week. Roller skating, we're hoping to add ice skating during the holiday season. Another handmade market during the holiday season. So I think we have over 30 different events that we have planned for this year. So no one can say there's nothing going on in Heggestown anymore.
That's awesome. Thank you for all the work you've done.
You guys are good with this?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could please get a motion to go into special session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. First, we have introduction of an ordinance to purchase Meritas Holdings.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to introduce an ordinance to approve the contract of sale for purchase of real property from Meritas. The sale will be in accordance with all the terms and conditions outlined in the attached contract of sale.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want, since this is introduction, I'm going to make a couple of comments. I think similar to the comments I've made on this subject a number of the times we've discussed it. I'm happy to vote in favor of introduction of the ordinance this evening. I'm still struggling a little bit for a couple of reasons with supporting this. Really two primary reasons. One is, and I think I've said this before, we have what now amounts to sort of two major economic projects that are going to anchor themselves, if you will, you know, a block and a half to two blocks in either direction. This is likely the largest undeveloped, that's the best word, tract of land, contiguous tract of land in the city, in downtown in particular, and happens to be located strategically between those two huge projects that will likely stand to welcome a number of folks, you know, on a regular basis for recreational purposes, being, you know, the multi-use facility on one end, the field house on the other. You know, and this sits, as, you know, as our discussions have indicated, you know, in some of those pristine viewing sort of, you know, manner of the properties in downtown. So I just have concern that, you know, taking this away from the opportunity for private development before we even get to that point, is that really the highest and best use of this land? I think that that's a real concern for me. Because once we agree to go down this road and we enter into these, you know, historic preservation agreements and those, I mean, you look at the, what is it?
Alm Sales.
The Alm's House, the Gatekeeper's Entrance to the Fairgrounds Park. I mean, once we do this, there's sort of no one ringing this bell. It isn't like we can buy this and then we can just easily go and sell it like we've done with other properties. We're entering into agreements that basically are putting entities like the Historic Trust and federal folks in pretty good control of how this property will exist for the next 100 years. And that's just the reality. And so I have due concern about that, given the fact that we're installing this other private development, you know, immediately in the adjoining areas. The second issue that I have, and maybe this can be worked out as we do head down this road, and if this is the road we're going to go down, and I think I've said this as well, while I'm looking to public works and going, you know, do we really want to own another piece of property that we maintain? I really wouldn't want this to become a partnership where we turn this property over for state or federal ownership. And I say that because of where it sits, because of the proximity that it has, and recognizing that, you know, oftentimes, when property such as this is turned over to state or federal, you know, recreational entities, property becomes less accessible to the public for that recreational use than more. And so, you know, I don't want a piece of property that we've now obtained intended for this recreational purpose, and now we have these two big things on each side, and it's only open for certain things, for certain times, for certain activities. And in a manner that, and I think I've said this as well, that is of a park skate that really isn't an engaging design that I've seen yet, but more another memorial-oriented design that kids just don't, you know, I don't know, as repetitively actively engage in. So those are the two concerns that I have.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval to submit applications for Senator George C. Edwards Fund.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for the Mayor and City Council to authorize city staff to submit applications to and receive funds from the Western Maryland Economic Future Investment Board for funding from the fiscal year 2023 of the Senator George C. Edwards Fund. The applications will request for the following projects. Number one, the Heggestown Fieldhouse, request for a million. Number two, the Heggestown Revolving Loan Fund, request $250,000. And number three, Invest Heggestown Program, request $750,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Removal from the table, approval of an ordinance to add Chapter 230 transient housing to the city code.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to remove from the table approval of an ordinance to add Chapter 230 transient housing to the code of the city of Heggestown. If removal from the table, the motion to approve the ordinance originally scheduled for consideration on December 20th, 2022 must be made. I have the ability to make that motion correct. Because I don't know that I was one of the people in favor of tabling it. I just want to make sure I wasn't part of the winning side that motioned to table it, that I can properly make the motion to remove it from the table. Okay.
Is there a second? So no second to remove it from the table? So it remains off the table, correct? It dies. Well, then there has to be a second in order to make the motion.
Just to bring it off the table.
Just to bring it off the table so we can make the motion, have discussion, and vote. Otherwise, it just dies.
A motion to take it off the table so we have the discussion.
So you'd have to make a second. You'd have to make a second.
You have to remove it from the table because it was put on the table on December 20th. So you've got to take it off the table. And then, once it's off the table, you can go back to
Discussing.
The original. The motion has to be made to approve the ordinance, and then that opens it for discussion.
So a second. Any discussion now? Okay, all in favor to untable it?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have approval of an ordinance add Chapter 230 transient housing to the city code.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the Mayor and City Council approve an ordinance to add Chapter 230 transient housing to the code of the city of Heggestown. This added chapter will, one, establish a licensing program for transient housing facilities, which includes hotels, motels, inns, bed and breakfast structures, and short-term rentals. Two, enact license fees for transient housing facilities based on their level for hotels and license fees for bed and breakfast and short-term rentals. Three, create a tier structure related to cost-for-service ratio for hotels. Four, establish inspection requirements for transient housing facilities. Five, require training for transient housing owners, managers, and staff on human trafficking activities, human trafficking victims, and overdose response programs. Six, create transient housing facility guest register requirements pertaining to transient visitors letting any transient housing unit. Seven, enact premises requirements prohibiting hourly rates and letting transient housing units for illegal purposes. And eight, provide processes to deny, suspend, or revoke transient housing facility applications and licenses.
Is there a second? Okay, so the motion dies. Removal from the table, approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 65 habitual offender to enhance support to our transient visitors and neighborhoods.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to remove from the table the approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 65 habitual offender of the code of the city of Heggestown.
Is there a second? All right, motion dies. Removal from the table.
Can't do the next one.
Why?
It never came off the table.
Never came off tables. You can't do it.
That would be the approval.
I think she's already moved on to the
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. So removal from the table, approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 95 excessive use of city services to impose fees for police law enforcement services, code administration services, which are over and above the cost providing normal police protection, law enforcement, code administration services at transient housing facilities.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to remove from the table the approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 95 excessive use of city services of the code of the city of Heggestown.
Is there a second? Mr. Administrator.
Just a comment regarding the announcement today. I personally could not be more thrilled that the governor-elect has selected you to be the Special Secretary for opioid response. I don't think there's any better person on the planet that could do that job. And I know that you will take into that position the same enthusiasm and results-oriented approach that you have here. And that I know, speaking for staff, we appreciate more than you ever know. I think as much as what the state will gain in you, the city will lose in you. But we know that you're always here, and I know that your successor will be every bit as passionate and capable of leading this city as you have. So as a staff person, as a neighbor, and a friend, good luck to you. And don't be a stranger to us.
Thank you. Councilmember Pritchard.
Well, I'm glad I got you into this seven years ago.
Thank you.
But anyway, congratulations, and I know you're doing well, and I look forward to visiting you and wherever you end up at, be it Annapolis or Baltimore or wherever. So good luck and fair winds to you. I want to say something about what we didn't take off the table tonight and what we didn't pass. I am not against protection for transient residents. I'm not against that at all. I am also not against to holding people to a certain standard, especially those who have a business, that deals with the public. I still feel that we, as a city, have not gotten to the point where we're doing our part yet in order to make somebody else do their part and feel good about it. I mean, when you look yourself in the mirror, you've got to be able to say, am I doing what I should do too? And I don't believe we are. I believe we will, and I believe we'll get there, but we're not there yet. And I hope that staff comes back with something after, hopefully, a joint meeting with hoteliers and bed and breakfast and all those people like we did with nonprofits that day. Have them come in and sit in an open session and have a frank conversation about what we can do and what we can put together that makes sense, that everybody can live with. So, thank you, that's all I have for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Burnett?
Well, it's been an honor to serve with you. Full circle moment for you, well-deserved position. I am so proud of you, and congratulations.
Thank you. I swore I wasn't going to cry tonight. Councilmember Breschler.
I think I would echo the comments. Obviously, congratulations. The governor knows what we all already knew, that he's getting a great asset in your services, and we will say a little more goodbyes when we actually get to leave the seat for the On the item that we did not bring back to the table this evening, I certainly agree that we need to find some resolution to it. I would not agree that we're not doing all weekend, because I, you know, I get to see the reports and communications from our public safety staff that are repeatedly required to respond to these endless activities in the best manner they are able to, with the number of personnel that they have to commit to it. And that has not changed the result of how those entities choose to operate. So I'm not sure, you know, what else there is out there that we can do at this point that isn't any different as this code is to countless number of other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland that are already and have been doing this for some time successfully. It reminds me a little bit of when we first broached the subject of rental registration in this city, and we had staff that would bring us the pictures, and I can still recall of your trees, full-grown trees growing out of the basements of some of these places, you know, that were being rented out at the same time, and entire apartments, you know, being wired with lamp cord. And I just remember Carol Moller at that time, just looking at them and going, you know, we have to do something. And I just, I'm at that point at this moment to say, we have to do something.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I would agree that we have to do something. Very difficult for me, working in nonprofit, and working and dealing with those services every single day, and with the homeless and transient. It's difficult for me to sit in this seat and then tomorrow may have to advocate for someone who, you know, needs to be in one of those locations, so it's very difficult. But I agree, we need to do something, and I'm getting emotional, and I'm very trying not to. But I just want to say that, congratulations, number one, and job well done. Job well done. And may not feel like it right now, may feel kind of like torn and all over the place, but you set out to make government, and make it a better place, and make government hear you, and know that this opioid is a health concern, and you've done that. And so, congratulations. You made looking like a woman and a mom in politics, something that makes us, as moms, feel like we can too. We can show up for our daughters, so thank you. And I know we've had a contentious place, but I feel like that's made us better. And I'm cheering you on. I'm proud of you. Hagerstown loses you, but the state of Maryland gains you. And yeah, congratulations to our governor-elect for tomorrow. First black governor in Maryland, some place that my grandson can aspire to be. And congratulations to our lieutenant governor-elect, a woman of color, who consistently checks in and asks how our grandchildren are doing. And so I know they care about Hagerstown. And thank you. Thank you for fighting for us and advocating for us, and thank you for taking a chance on a black man when he was polling 1%. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
I guess I pretty much have just accepted that I'm going to cry for the next two weeks. I keep trying to pull it together, and then I keep breaking down again, but I truly appreciate the overwhelming kind words from you guys and the support that I've gotten all day today. I had my phone plugged in because it was almost dying halfway through the day, and I just, I'm really excited, I'm honored. This is one of the best things that's ever happened to me, but it's definitely bitter sweet. And I echo congratulations to Weston Aruna, No One Left Behind in Maryland, and tomorrow's going to be a really beautiful day. So thank you to all of my friends and family, and even strangers who have reached out today. And it's definitely going to be a new day in Maryland. So I will see you guys. Oh, wait, I'm done. We are going to work together as mayor and council and staff and figure out how to replace me, hopefully, over the next two weeks. And then, if that vacancy is from a council member, take applications, but we are working through that process and are going to try to get that done as quickly as possible. So we will keep the public updated with how we're moving forward. With that, I will see you next week.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. I'm Wes Decker, joined by Community Engagement Officer Brittany Erasmandy. Welcome to Council Wrap.
Thank you.
And let's talk a little bit about what you brought before mayor and council during the meeting. Can you give us a little background on that? There wasn't a whole lot that was discussed, so I feel like it gives us a little bit of wiggle room here not to repeat exactly what was said during the meeting. So talk about the grant a little bit, what it's intended to do, the name of it, Heart of Art, pretty self-explanatory there, but again, just sort of lay the groundwork on this.
Sure. So the name of the grant is the Heart of Art Grant Program. It's funded through ARPA, which is American Rescue Plan Act. So essentially, I was given a certain dollar amount. So this first grant that we're unveiling is the Heart of Art Grant. So we have $12,000 for this grant program. I'm hoping that we get 12 great applicants that are available for 10 of these markets that we're hosting throughout the course of 2023. And so those 12 artists would receive $1,000 over the course of a calendar year 2023. So artists would get paid $100 for each market that they attend, and any and all vendor fees would be waived for them.
Is there a definition of what an artist is as it relates to this?
We're leaving it pretty loosely tied there, just because we don't want to limit anyone. So I'm interested to see what type of applications we'll get, but in my mind, some examples would be fine artists, woodworking, anything handmade, handcrafted by an individual, fiber arts. I know that's another big thing now. So we're trying not to say, this is what you have to be.
Okay.
But we'll see what type of applications we get, and if we need to adjust and set any different parameters.
Yeah, I know you put out a call for bands recently, and that response was overwhelming. So if you got anything close to that with this, you'd almost have to perhaps turn some people away from the program itself.
Yes. Shockingly, we've had over 100 bands submit. We currently have nine vacant slots. So we do have an entertainment group that they're going to be helping choose those bands, so I'm thankful I'm not the only one doing that. But if we get that many for this, I think it also shows what a vibrant arts community we live in.
Definitely.
And that's another concept behind this grant, is to bring different events into the heart of our downtown, especially the Arts and Entertainment District, and to have these artists meet new customers, get these connections going, to hopefully organically build the arts community, more so than what it already is currently.
And you mentioned 10 different markets. Can you expand on that a little bit?
So we have two handmade Hagerstown markets happening this year, one in the spring and one for the holiday season. And then we have, I believe it's seven midweek music and markets. So that will be every Wednesday in July and August. And that, not only will it be a market, we'll also have live music there as well, hopefully a food truck. Hopefully, we're going to do an open container, so there'll be a beer garden there as well.
Where do you envision those happening?
University Plaza.
Okay, in University Plaza.
The only one that won't be in University Plaza is the handmade Hagerstown Holiday Market, which will be on South Potomac Street, like we did the Makers Market this past year.
Yeah. And talk a little bit about that, some of these things. I mean, you're still getting your feet wet to some degree, but lots of new opportunities for both people who would attend these events, and again, for those who would be involved with these events. And, you know, what's your assessment so far of what you've done to this point, and how successful you believe that that's been?
I think so far, we've had a decent amount of success. This is literally all trial and error, because we're just feeling out what the residents of Hagerstown like, what will bring people to visit Hagerstown. I heard great feedback from the Makers Market this past November. We had several families come up and say, can we do more of this in downtown? So hopefully, we're answering their call for, can we do more activities like this? So we're excited to have a continuous offering, especially during the summer months, when you're always looking for things to do. So yeah, we're just excited, and we hope that we get a decent application pool that we can choose from. And we'll probably send this out, I think, tomorrow, and the deadline will be February 23rd. So after that date, we'll select our applicants, let them know who's receiving this grant, and then go from there.
And how do people apply? What's the best method for that?
So we'll be sending out a press release. We also will have our application live on imaginehagerstown.org.
Okay.
We'll also put this under the Arts and Entertainment District on the Hagerstown, City of Hagerstown website.
Okay.
But we'll make sure all of that is up there. So, we have an online form that people can fill out. We also have a PDF form as well.
Obviously, you must feel it's important to compensate these artists for their time. So, you're certainly looking at it from the perspective that what they bring to the table is very important. So, what did it take to get to this point? What did you consider to say, hey, this is a good idea?
I think just listening to vendors and finding out what was holding them back from attending certain events.
Yeah.
We've also noticed that the vendor market is sometimes oversaturated with events happening. And another thing was, how do we compete with Frederick or Rockville, Montgomery County? How do we make vendor, a different type of vendor that may be from those areas, interested in coming here? So, I think this hopefully is a draw for a different type of vendor to be interested in Hagerstown and hopefully, we have the audience and the crowd comes out to be interested to purchase their products. But even if they don't purchase it, at least they're going home with $100.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that's a big plus for them because they know they're not going away empty-handed no matter what transpires at the market. You know, how difficult has it been? Because, you know, I know it's a difficult position to some degree to come in and then have like City Farmers Market go away. I mean, something that was a tradition for so long. Clearly, the support had not really been there from the public and even the number of vendors who were on hand. And I know there are people who will dispute that. There are people who loved Hagerstown City Farmers Market. I think there are a lot of great memories. But, you know, in large part, it's a lot of nostalgia at this point and there aren't a lot of markets that are done that way, especially in a huge venue, which was much larger than Hagerstown City Farmers Market ever needed. I know, again, there are some people who might dispute that, but at the same time, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, in attempting to come up with markets like this and to find that connection between vendors wanting to be part of it because of what maybe the theme is and then people being attracted from the outside to come and make purchases or at least show up and want to be part of that, you know, how difficult is that? Because you're dealing with something that was around forever and now you don't have that in and of itself, but you're trying to create something kind of new.
First of all, let those people attack you.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I mean, I, you know, I'd seen it myself over a year and I just heard it so often and I'll go back to, you know, Councilmember Alshire was a vendor at Hagerstown City Farmers Market at one point. So, I think when you have people who experienced it from that side and then are on the other side, trying to come up with some way to create a handshake that's going to work for both parties and then ultimately, it doesn't quite work out, it doesn't mean that it's necessarily over. There are other things that can be done, which is certainly what you're attempting to do.
I think we're trying to blend the best of everything that we've had. So, we're taking the live music concept and aspect and we're taking the market more so of an artisan market versus a traditional farmer's market in the sense of that. And we're going to try something different. I don't know whether or not it will succeed. Hopefully, it will and it will become something new for Hagerstown families to get excited about or people outside of Hagerstown say, you know what? It's a summer evening, let's make the drive over the mountain, let's go hear that band, let's go see these vendors and just bring people really to the heart of our downtown.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea, a great concept and hopefully, you know, people kind of take to it. And I really do like, you know, putting that in the middle of the week, as you referenced at one point. You know, people just seem to, you know, look forward to their weekend activities as they are and they want to get an early start on the weekend. I mean, I think that's human nature. You know, you've got time off, you're taking off for a certain period of time, you want to get out of town as soon as possible. So, a lot of people are leaving town Friday or sometimes even Thursday. Put it in the middle of the week, everybody gets excited about Wednesday. Hey, it's all downhill from here.
Right, yes. And I think last year, Amish Outlaws, they got rained out in May, so they performed on a Thursday and we were, it was kind of a trial and error, like, are people going to show up on the Thursday?
Right.
And we had probably just as many people that would show up on a Thursday as would show up on a Friday last year. So, I think that was a good acknowledgement of, okay, people will come out if there is something good enough for them to come out or engaging their interest in that.
Sure. And from your corner of the world, I mean, you're doing a ton of engaging with people in the community. If someone has an idea, they want to talk to you about something, I mean, how can they get in touch with you?
Easiest way is events@hagerstownmd.org. We can, we're happy to meet with you, get new ideas. We've been meeting with Main Street business owners. We have an Arts and Entertainment Management Board now. So, we're really trying to get more people involved and engaged. This year, we're really going to be focusing on volunteers. How do we get more volunteers and organizations on board with what's going on downtown? So, yes, events@hagerstownmd.org is the place where we are welcoming for positive ideas.
That's the key word.
Yes.
Positive ideas. We'll take all of those we can get and see what we can do with them. Brittany, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thanks to all of you for watching. For now, that's a wrap. See you next time on Council Rap.